Good afternoon, parents and community members. Welcome to our virtual town hall meeting with Forsyth County Schools. My name is LeAnn Rice. I'm the Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. We're very excited to have you join us today. I'd like to introduce our superintendent, Dr. Jeff Bearden, who's going to speak to you for a few minutes about our county guidelines.
Thank you, LeAnn. Good afternoon, everyone. LeAnn, I just wanted to check, you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Once again, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I just have a couple of comments I want to make about our guidelines for reopening schools. Last night, the Board of Education adopted our Forsyth County Schools Guidelines for reopening. As you may have heard, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting at the White House earlier this week on how we can open America's schools safely. One reason I accepted the invitation was to hear firsthand from health experts on the topic, especially the wearing of a mask or a face covering. This is by far the most debated issue facing America's schools as we prepare to reopen safely. In attendance at my meeting at the White House was Secretary of Health and Human Services, Alex Azar, Dr. Deborah Burks, the Coronavirus Response Coordinator, Dr. Robert Redfield, the CDC Director, and Dr. Sally Goza, President of the American Academy of Pediatrics. All four health professionals sent the very same clear message: When in public and we are not able to social distance, we should all wear a mask or a face covering. Our schools in Forsyth County are crowded public places. As I have stated numerous times, schools and school furniture were not designed for social distancing. They were designed to be collaborative workspaces, and rightfully so. Last week, Dr. Goza and her team from the American Academy of Pediatrics issued a press release that stated that even at three feet apart, if students and staff are wearing face coverings, it reduces the likelihood of transmission. Also in that press release, pediatricians agreed that our children need to return to school. While no single set of actions will completely eliminate the risk, our guidelines around reopening our schools are intended to mitigate the risk. Earlier this week, my staff met with Dr. Pamela Logan, Georgia Department of Health. Dr. Logan contributed to our guidelines and endorsed their approval. All students and staff will be expected to wear a mask or face covering. As stated earlier, health officials throughout the country are consistent in their messaging that when in public, we should all wear a mask. I have heard from hundreds of parents on both sides of this issue. While I was unable to respond to every message, I read them all. I've heard from parents of children with asthma and other health conditions that are telling me that their children simply cannot wear a mask for long periods of time, or perhaps not at all. I've actually heard from some staff members sending me the same message. Some of our parents are telling me that the virtual option is simply not a viable option for them. I'm not going to question the health of our staff and our students when our parents are telling me that it's not feasible or practical that they wear a mask. That's why I was opposed to the word "required" when it comes to wearing a mask. We will not discipline our students, our staff, for not wearing a mask. We will not have incentives in place for students to wear a mask. We will, however, positively promote why wearing a mask in public is so important. My staff and I will model that same expectation. I think the case for wearing a mask or a face covering while in public and while we're unable to social distance has been very well articulated and documented in the medical community. The other top question that I received from parents has been, what are we going to do if a student or staff member is diagnosed with COVID-19? In our meeting with Dr. Logan from the Department of Health last week, she made it very clear that decisions to close a classroom, a wing of a school, an entire school, a cluster of schools, or the entire school district will be situational. We're required to report any known cases of COVID-19. We're required to report who may have been exposed and to alert parents of children who may have been exposed. Once the Department of Health has all of our information, they will then direct us on next steps. Dr. Redfield from the CDC made it very clear in my meeting with him earlier this week that just because a school district has cases of COVID-19, that does not mean the entire district should close. We should only close schools, classrooms, or, when necessary, the district to mitigate the spread of the virus. For those reasons, we are giving parents a choice for face-to-face or virtual instruction. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to our Assistant Superintendent, LeAnn Rice, who will review with you what the K-5 Virtual Experience will look like for students and parents. I'm going to turn it over to you now, LeAnn. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bearden. I am going to touch just a little bit on the 612 virtual. We've had quite a few questions submitted about that, so if you're tuned in and you have questions about middle school and high school, hold on for just a few minutes. I do want to thank you so much for submitting your questions. We received over 1,000 questions to our website that have been submitted since we posted that link. I know that we couldn't answer all of your questions on Tuesday, but we did have a town hall on Tuesday where we focused on a cluster of questions that revolved around three main areas. We had Ms. Debbie Smith, who's our Director of Student Support. She talked about safety procedures and how we're taking care of students, their physical, social, emotional, and health needs while they're here in the buildings. We also had Ms. Sarah Taylor, who's our Director of Special Education, and she spoke about our special education students, our students with IEPs, and the types of things that we'll be able to do to provide a virtual option to those students if they so choose. I would like to remind you that she shared there is a separate link that if you do have a child with disabilities and you are choosing the virtual option, her team would like to talk to you before school starts to make sure that we have a contingency plan in place. And on the Restart Forsyth website, there is a link for any parents who have students with disabilities choosing the virtual option. And that way, her team will know how to reach out to you and make a contingency plan before school begins. And finally, we had Ms. Rebecca Johnson, who's our Director of Elementary Education, talk to us about what a typical day in the virtual classroom would look like. She took us through what students would be doing, that there would be a combination of live or synchronous lessons and offline or asynchronous lessons. If you'd like more information about any of those topics, I encourage you to go to our website and view the town hall meeting from Tuesday. Now, with regard to the 612 virtual, Drew Hayes is the Principal of Forsyth Virtual Academy, and his team has worked diligently to provide information and work with our middle school and high school principals on course selections and how parents can register for that. We have direct links now on our Restart Forsyth page that will take you to a Frequently Asked Questions document. It'll also take you to a link to register your child for FVA, and there's also a video that will give you a little bit more information. I do want to answer a few questions that were posed. If you're choosing the 612 option with Forsyth Virtual Academy, those courses are asynchronous. That means that they are not having live lessons that are done. Your students will get assignments for the week, and they can pace themselves out. Those courses are taught by Forsyth County teachers who are here in our middle schools and high schools. They're teaching during the day, but they would be able to respond to your children after school hours and provide help and assistance as needed. We've also had questions if students who choose Forsyth Virtual Academy are able to still participate in sports, clubs, extracurricular activities. And that is yes. Any activities that are available to the face-to-face students are also available to the virtual students. You're only choosing a program, the model for virtual instruction. Your children are still connected to their home school, their middle school, or their high school. And finally, if a course is not offered through Forsyth Virtual Academy or through Georgia Virtual School, parents have asked how their children could have access to that course. A common example might be banned in middle school or a vet science class at Denmark High School. Those are classes that currently aren't offered virtually. In that case, we want to be sure that if your child is passionate about that or needs it to finish a pathway, you do have the option to allow your child to come back on campus for that class. They don't have to be on campus all day, but if that's certainly a class that your child very much wants to take, then that option is available to take the majority of their classes virtually, but then to take that class on campus. We do have a video, a very short video, we just want to show real quick, that might answer a few more questions you have about Forsyth Virtual Academy.
Welcome to Forsyth Virtual, and thanks for your interest in our program. So what is FVA? Forsyth Virtual is a virtual education program that works as an extension for all middle and high schools in Forsyth County. To participate, students must be enrolled in Forsyth County Schools. Full-time and part-time students retain access to clubs, athletics, and activities at their base schools. Our teaching staff consists of all Forsyth County Schools' teachers, and the curriculum remains consistent with Forsyth County's exceptional quality and rigor. So how do FVA classes work? Students access their courses via its learning and class link, just as they would in a traditional face-to-face setting. Our courses by majority are asynchronous, which provides much more flexibility when needed. However, our course pacing coincides with Forsyth County Schools' calendars, so students are not able to progress more quickly than in a traditional format. For more information and registration, please check us out at www.forsyth.k12.gus/fva. Thanks again.
So I hope that answered some of the questions that our middle school and high school parents have had about Forsyth Virtual Academy. And again, if you still have more questions, I know the team at Forsyth Virtual Academy would be happy to help you in making your choice. Just reach out to them. For those in middle school and high school, please remember that your deadline for choosing Forsyth Virtual Academy is July 31st. For elementary schools, that deadline is next Tuesday, July 14th. Well, as Dr. Bearden shared, our Board of Education met yesterday to approve our guidelines for returning to school, and our elementary principals have been very diligent in working together to talk about how those guidelines will look in their buildings. I do want you to keep in mind that our buildings at the elementary level are very different. We have some schools that have large populations, over 1,300 students. We have other schools that might only have 600 students, and the facilities are very different. And so our guidelines are general to make sure that building principals can make those guidelines fit into the facilities that they have and meet the needs of their school population. Many of you did submit questions that were very specific to your school needs, and I encourage you to pay attention to your children's homeschool's website, social media posts, because your elementary principals are going to be sharing very detailed information about what it will look like in their school settings on Monday through their websites and their social media. They want you to have the most updated information before the deadline on Tuesday so that you can make the best decision for your family. But I can certainly answer many of your other questions today, and I'm going to try to do that to the best of my ability. Again, we had over 1,000 questions submitted, and so I apologize that we haven't been able to answer each person's question individually. I've tried to group them together today to help answer as many as I possibly can. So here they are. What if I registered for virtual, but now I want to change to the face-to-face environment? You can email your principal, and we can make that change through next Tuesday, July 14th. Once the list is finalized on the 14th, I'll be sending all the names and information to our Registration Department at the Hill Center, and they'll be officially registering your children for the virtual program. Principals will get those names and have all of that information. So you have until July 14th to change your mind either way. At the nine-week mark, can I switch from face-to-face to virtual? Yes. At the nine-week mark, actually probably about two weeks before the nine-week mark, we'll survey our parents to see if you want to continue in the mode you've chosen or if you want to make that change. Am I guaranteed the same teacher all day long? If you switch from one format to another, for example, if you start in the virtual format and then switch to a face-to-face format at the nine weeks, you will most likely have a different teacher. There is also a chance that your child's teacher might change at the nine-week mark if we have a large number of students change format. Our principals are working very hard to balance classes, and we want to be able to maintain the class sizes that are appropriate for our students in both a face-to-face and a virtual setting. If I start one way and two to three weeks in, it's just not working for us. Can we change? No. We really need you to make this nine-week commitment. We're trying to keep consistency for our students as much as possible. If students are switching settings constantly, then teachers might have to be moved to accommodate those changes so that we maintain good class sizes. We can make changes at the nine-week grading period. Can the virtual option be year-long? Absolutely. We are offering this option, and even if our class sizes decrease, you will still have that option for virtual all year long. What happens if our district goes all virtual, like we did last spring? Your students will stay with their current teacher. So our students in the K-5 Virtual Program will see no change, and they will continue with their virtual teacher, just as they have been. Our students in the K-5 Face-to-Face Format, they'll learn from home with their same face-to-face teacher. They'll be following its learning and using Microsoft Teams to continue their learning from home. What happens if my child has to quarantine for 14 days? Will he immediately be moved to the virtual classroom? No. He or she will continue with his or her assigned teacher, and they'll complete lessons through its learning from home. So their teacher will be posting assignments in its learning, and they'll follow just as if they were absent on a given day. It's important to note that if your child is quarantined, then they will be counted present. They'll be working from home, but still counted present. If we enroll in virtual and we find we can't provide the necessary support as learning coaches, can we unenroll our students and homeschool them? You certainly have that option, but we hope that you'll reach out to your virtual teacher and your principal for us to try to help you and provide as much support as we can. If this is the best option for your family, then our Registration Department is happy to help you with that. If we change from virtual to a face-to-face option at the nine-week marks, can we still have bus service? Absolutely. We'll have that as one of our questions on the survey, and our Transportation Department would be happy to work with you to make that happen. How are you protecting students on the bus? We cannot completely social distance on the bus. We just don't have enough buses or drivers to do that. But our drivers will wear masks, and they will keep the windows open for ventilation. Buses will be cleaned after every route. Can my children sit together on the bus to reduce their exposure to other children? Absolutely. Our Transportation Department is working on that option for you. I registered for the virtual option, but I didn't receive a confirmation notice. We will, once I send the list of the final registrants on July 15th to our Registration Department, they will be sending confirmation to all of the parents who registered. I registered for the virtual option, but I forgot to check that I need to check out a Chromebook. Can I still do that? Absolutely. You can either re-register and mark that, or you can certainly email and reach out to your child's principal, and they'll be happy to provide you with a Chromebook. What is the best device for virtual learning? We recommend a Chromebook, a laptop, or a desktop. Some students who have tried to access our applications on tablets or iPads have had some difficulty getting through those applications effectively, and so for our experience, the best options have been a Chromebook, a laptop, or a desktop. Is there an extra fee for K-5 Virtual? No, there is no extra charge for making this choice. What kind of supplies will my child need for the virtual experience? You'll need supplies like paper and pencils, maybe crayons, scissors, rulers, glue, some of the same things that we would use in the classroom. But your virtual teacher will communicate that with you when she reaches out to your class. What if I've already bought school supplies through my school, through our PTA or other organization? You absolutely can still go by the school and pick up your school supply box. Am I able to donate those supplies to my school? Absolutely. You've purchased those supplies. It's your choice. You may either pick them up, or you may choose to donate them to other students within your building. If my child is in the face-to-face setting, will he be sharing the supplies I send in as part of a community collection? No. We would like for our students to use their own supplies. We're trying to limit the amount of shared items that we have, so if you do purchase school supplies for your children, they would be used just by your children. If we choose the virtual option, can my child still participate in clubs or be on teams, like the Science Olympiad, or the math team, or the robotics team? Absolutely. The opportunities for students are available regardless of your school option. But keep in mind that schools have decided not to offer clubs this first nine weeks. They want to make sure that we have the appropriate safety procedures in place, and so they are limiting those options during the first nine-week period. Individual schools will have more information on that for you. Will schools continue to offer their after-school programs for childcare? Yes. Can my child be in the yearbook if we choose virtual? Yes, they can. Just as we said, any options that are available to our face-to-face children are also available to our virtual students. You're still a part of your child's school, and so principals will be communicating the dates that yearbook pictures are being taken, and you are welcome to take your child to the school at that date and time to have their picture taken for the yearbook. Is there a PTO or a PTA that's designated for the virtual school, or do we participate at our zoned school? You would absolutely still be a part of your school's PTO and PTA, whether you take the virtual option or the face-to-face option. Is my child still considered a student at his zoned school? For example, my child goes to SONI, and I want him to be considered a SONI chief. Absolutely. This is simply an option for providing instruction to your children, but your child is a part of his or her base school. I have twins and would like them to have the same virtual teacher. Is that possible? I love this question because I'm a mom of twins. Absolutely. You would just make that recommendation or that request with your child's principal. There are several families in my neighborhood who are keeping our children home, and we'd like to work together to support one another so that some of us can continue working, and we share days that we act as the learning coach. Is that possible? It is possible. I would reach out and request that with your child's principal. I would like you to keep in mind, though, that some schools are going to have quite a few virtual students, and some may not. Some schools may be sharing virtual teachers across buildings, and so while I can't promise you that that can happen, I can assure you that your principals will make every effort to honor your requests. If we choose the virtual option, will grades be given, or is this a pass/fail like it was last spring? Let me assure you that this is a very different situation than last spring. Your children will be receiving grades. They will have assignments. They need to be following the due dates that are given. They will have assessments and tests and quizzes, both formative and summative, that will be graded. There is no hold harmless during this period. We only had the hold harmless in the spring due to the emergency circumstances that we found ourselves in. How are our students assessed in the virtual option? Your virtual teachers will be utilizing a lot of different strategies. They'll be holding one-on-one conferences where they may be asking your children questions. Your children may be doing performance tasks where they demonstrate their knowledge live on camera or through a submission, something that they upload and submit to the its learning platform. They may also be taking tests and quizzes online. We will ask our parents and children to sign a statement saying that the work that is submitted is solely that of the child, and we do ask you to honor this for us. We want our children to be able to show what they know, because if they are having some struggles, we want to be able to support their needs and fill in any gaps that they have. Is the in-school curriculum different from the virtual curriculum? No. The curriculum we will be teaching through the virtual model is our Forsyth County curriculum, and it is based on the Georgia Standards of Excellence. We will be following the Forsyth County pacing guide, and in that way, any students who make a change in format from the virtual to the face-to-face or vice versa would still be at the same place at the end of the nine-week period. At my school, students rotate to different teachers for each subject in fourth and fifth grade. Will my child have different teachers in the virtual setting? No. We will have one virtual teacher that's assigned to your child. There will be a class, and that teacher will provide instruction for all of the core content areas, so there will not be the shuffling of teachers. There won't be multiple its learning pages to go to. You'll have one dedicated virtual teacher. Can the virtual teacher be from another Forsyth County school? And if we go back to face-to-face at nine weeks and we had a teacher from a different school, do we still go back to our zoned school? It's a very good question. Some of our schools right now are only at about 24, 25 students who've chosen the virtual option, and that's over all six-grade levels. So you can imagine that one teacher at that building can't serve all six-grade levels. So some of our schools may be sharing virtual teachers across several buildings so that they can serve all students in a particular grade level more effectively. If your child does have a virtual teacher from another building and you decide to come back to the face-to-face model at the nine-week period, you would definitely go back to your zoned school and have a teacher from your school. How are you choosing the virtual teachers? Will they lose their teaching spots at their current school? Another really good question. Our principals are working right now on selecting the teachers that will be the virtual teachers. They sent information to teachers last Monday and asked teachers who met certain qualifications and certain characteristics to consider making this move. We're looking for teachers who are excellent communicators, who have good understanding of technology, and have good understanding of the curriculum to be able to adjust to a virtual environment. We want teachers who are passionate about working with students in both small groups and individually, as well as demonstrating whole-group lessons. These teachers are still assigned to their home schools. They'll be located in their home schools. They're still a part of whatever school that they are at, and we want them to be a part of their third-grade team or their school and all the activities that the building is currently doing. That's one reason that our virtual teachers will be housed in the school building, so that they stay a part of that school community. They will not lose their teaching spots in the building that they're in. They're simply being reassigned to a different form of instruction. Can we see an example of the lesson plan? What will it look like for the parents as we coach them? This is a really great question, and although Ms. Johnson gave us a detailed example of what the day would look like, we realize that it helps you to be able to see what it's actually going to look like when you're sitting behind the computer with your child. And so one of our wonderful instructional technology specialists has created a video for you that I'm going to show you now that's going to take you through what that day will look like.
Good evening. The purpose of this video is to provide a brief overview of the student and learning coach experience with the virtual K-5 option. In this demo, I'm logged into Ms. Bean's class as a second-grade student. Ms. Bean's planner appears on the left side of the overview screen. The teachers in our district are expected to post all lessons to the planner weekly. We will naturally hold that expectation for our virtual classrooms as well. Teachers will have the flexibility to customize their planner, just as they normally would. However, we've taken steps to ensure that the student experience is as consistent as possible. To see the entire plan, the best practice is to click on the word "plans" and set the timeframe to "this week." There I can see all the fields of the planner as a student normally would. I want to direct your attention, however, to the Resources and Activities section. Here, we've asked teachers to provide a page for each of the week that is clearly labeled for the intended day of use. This is like a one-stop shop for the day. Students will not need to locate resources in a variety of places, as all materials and instructions for all subjects will be included on the page for that day. Let's take a look at Monday's example. Each day, the teacher will hold a morning meeting. This could often be a live meeting, but also could be a recording or a set of slides, and this may vary by school, by grade level, and by teacher. A block is provided for each subject that the student will participate in that day. Each block for each subject contains the same fields. There are learning targets. There's a success criteria statement that lets the student know how they're going to know if they've met the learning target. There's a reflection piece at the bottom, and then there's And then there is an instructional activity section, which will contain the meat of the lesson. Often, there will be a guide that can be accessed for the learning coach. If the lesson is detailed, the learning coach may need to have a broader overview of the lesson and may need to be provided with some coaching tips by the teacher so that coach can click here, access the guide, and have it open in a separate tab to glance back and forth at as they work with their student. The student is provided with any links to the activities that will be completed that day. In this particular lesson, there is only one link because the teacher has included all activities in something called a "learning path." The path keeps the student on track and restricts them from moving ahead if the tasks need to be completed in a particular order. We'll take just a moment to look at part of the path. The student would click the "start" button, and the first step in the path would be released to them. They're simply listening to Mrs. Bean do a read aloud, and this read aloud will be used for additional activities within the path. You can see that a pop-up box has appeared, and I've also seen the next step over here on the left. It will always be released as a pop-up, and then also in linear fashion over on the left-hand side. They're having a conversation now with you, the learning coach, and they simply click "yes" to show that they have done it. There is another video included in this path. And again, after a certain amount of time, students will be allowed to move on. It's the responsibility of the learning coach to ensure that students don't move on before they've actually completed all the activities on the page. Here, the student would simply be completing a survey about their interests. In a moment, they're going to move on, and they're going to complete some independent reading. The instructions are given, and then they will spend 30 minutes doing independent reading, which is a completely offline task. You'll find that our lessons will be very balanced. We'll have some online synchronous lessons, some online asynchronous lessons, and some completely offline lessons if we believe students do not need to sit in front of a screen all day. If I exit, I now have a "resume" button, so the student can leave this path and return at any time. I'm going to go back now and take a look at that Monday page again. I just wanted to also point out to you that the student will be provided with a quick daily checklist of the activities and tasks that need to be completed for every subject that they'll be participating in that day. In the "specials" block, students will either be provided a lesson for music, or art, or for PE. So this has not been an exhaustive look at the online option. I hope that this will help you in your decision about whether or not to select the K-5 virtual school for your student for the 2021 school year, or at least for the first nine weeks. Thank you for watching.
And that video is listed on our Restart Forsyth webpage. So if you wanted to watch it again or look more carefully through some of those options, that is available for you. Will parents know the schedule for the live virtual sessions and for the small group and individual meetings? Absolutely. Your virtual teacher will communicate that to you. We know that you have other obligations, and that you want to be able to schedule your day with a mixture of the live lessons and the offline lessons. And so the teachers will communicate those expected live times with you. Will virtual students have Friday as a catch-up day like they did last spring? No. Our virtual option is following the calendar of our regular school day, and so students will be engaged in instruction all five days of the week. If my child moves from the virtual to the face-to-face option at nine weeks, how is his teacher determined? Your principals will work very hard. They want to continue to balance class sizes, and so they'll look at the number of students that are coming back into the face-to-face environment and the class sizes that are available. They will also try, to the best of their ability, look for a teacher that matches the needs of your child. If we're attending a school out of district, and we choose the virtual option, will we have to reapply for the out-of-district status? No. You are still attached to your out-of-district school, and you'll continue at that school through fifth grade. There is no need to reapply for the out-of-district status. I am in the process of registering, but I'm not able to complete it because I still need help forms completed at the doctor's office. Can I still choose the virtual option? Absolutely. There is an option. You can still go to our link on the Restart Forsyth website and fill out your information. In addition, our registrar's office will help you select that option. If you are only missing Form 3300, which is the form for hearing, vision, dental, and nutrition, we do have a 90-day waiver for that option, but it's only for that form. So if that's the only form you're missing, you'll still be able to register and come to either the face-to-face or virtual option, but you would have to submit that form in 90 days, which is November 5. And again, the registration office can help you with that information. If we choose the virtual option, what happens during Georgia Milestones? Does my child take the Milestones test at home? Well, at this time, we're still trying to figure out if Georgia Milestones will happen this year. Our governor and our state superintendent has applied for another waiver from our federal government for us not to have to take state testing in the spring. We don't know what the outcome of that will be. If we don't take Georgia Milestones, then you're not impacted at all, whether you're in the virtual or the face-to-face option. If we do have standardized testing, then we will work with you on that option. Your child would not take standardized testing at home, and so we would provide days and times for you to bring your child to the school to be able to complete that testing. Will we know who our virtual teacher is before August 6? Absolutely. Just like our face-to-face schools are offering open house, we will also have that option for our virtual schools, where those teachers will reach out to you and provide an overview about the experience. I watched the town hall on Tuesday, and they talked about that virtual classes would start at 8:00 a.m. Is that for all schools across the district? No. That was a sample schedule. We know that we have some schools that are early-start schools and start at 7:40, and some of our elementary schools are later start and start at 8:20. Your child's schedule will be determined by your child's school and virtual teacher. With virtual learning, will there be an effort to promote school interaction? Absolutely. The social environment is important whether your child chooses the face-to-face or the virtual option. And there will be dedicated time for class meetings and interaction through our Teams or Google Meet platforms to allow children to interact with each other. In addition, teachers will provide both individual and small-group instruction, and children will be allowed to work on activities together. For asynchronous learning, can students complete those activities at a time they choose as long as it's completed at the end of the day? Absolutely. We know that you have other things that might be going on. You might have other appointments, and children might need to finish an assignment later in the day. What will be provided for my virtual child if he needs some extra help? It would be the same experience as in the regular classroom. Your virtual teacher will work closely with you, and if your child has questions or needs support or extra help, she can schedule some individual or small-group conferences, and she can work with you as far as strategies to help your child. If your child qualifies for support services in the building, then we would also be providing those services to your child. You mentioned Tuesday how you're supporting students with an IEP. My child has a 504 plan. How will you support her? Excellent question. If your child has a 504 plan, I would reach out to your child's administration or case manager. And just like with the IEP, if you have certain accommodations or needs for your child, then your school and your virtual teacher will work with you to accommodate those. Is there a virtual option for students in the dual-language immersion program? We currently have that program at Kelly Mill, Coming Elementary, Brandywine Elementary, and Mashburn Elementary. For our new kindergarten students, unfortunately, we are not able to offer that option virtually. That program is very intense with language development, and instruction is given in both Spanish and English by two different teachers. For students who've never engaged in that type of environment, it would be very difficult for us to provide a similar virtual experience. Currently, the principals at those four schools are meeting to talk about how we could provide an option for first- and second-grade DLI students, and they will be in touch with our DLI parents early next week. How will students in the ESOL program be supported in the virtual option? Each school has ESOL teachers that are assigned to students, and if your child is in the ESOL program, then those teachers will be scheduling individual and small-group time to provide support and services to your children. In addition, those teachers will collaborate with the virtual teacher to make sure different accommodations and modifications are provided for the information. My child receives gifted services. What will that look like in the virtual setting? Forsyth County currently implements several different models for gifted delivery. Our state provides many different options that we can use. And so gifted services look different at the different schools. It's determined by a school principal based on the number of gifted teachers, the number of gifted students, and the types of services that best fit their needs. So it's difficult for me to say exactly what that would look like. I can share that all of our virtual gifted students will receive what's called a "cluster segment" in their English Language Arts class. Their teachers will be working with them individually and in small groups. They'll be conferencing with them and setting individual goals and adjusting their reading materials, both for reading level and interest level, to help them follow their passions and pursue any of the interests they have at a level that's commensurate with their abilities. Some schools may be able to offer additional services based on the number of teachers and the number of virtual students in the gifted program. That's a decision that will be made by your school's principal, and you can certainly follow up with him or her for more information. My child started testing for the gifted program in March, but wasn't able to finish before we were all sent home. Her gifted teacher said we would finish that testing in the fall. If we choose virtual, can that still happen? Absolutely. Your child's gifted teacher will be in contact with you in the fall. We will be establishing a testing window for students who weren't able to finish their gifted testing last spring. We will also have a testing window in the winter and another testing window in the spring. And if you have a child who had started testing but didn't finish, you can certainly choose any of those options. You are not compelled to bring your child into the building to finish testing. Any of the testing that we've started, those results are good for two years. And so you have time to decide if you want to wait and test later on in the year, or if this is something that you'd like to bring your child to school for in the fall when we do continue with the gifted testing. Again, your child's individual principal or gifted teacher will have more information for you on that. How will you support different levels of learners in the virtual English Language Arts and Math classes? Again, our teachers will be differentiating instruction in all of their classes, and they'll be holding individual and small-group sessions to be able to meet children's needs where they are. What will classes' sizes be like for both the virtual and the face-to-face option? In our schools, currently, they're funded with approximately one teacher for every 25 students. And so we try to maintain that class size, whether you're in a virtual setting or a face-to-face setting. Sometimes principals may make some classes some grade levels smaller than others. For instance, in kindergarten or first grade, we might want to have those classes a little bit smaller. Sometimes our upper grades classes, where children are more independent, may have more students in the classroom. That's a building-level decision, but we all try to maintain a similar class size whether you're choosing the virtual or the face-to-face option. How will you balance the face-to-face classrooms? This is a very important question, and it's why we're asking you to make your commitment by July 14. Your principals and assistant principals had already formed class lists when we went out last spring. And now, based on the number of students who are choosing the virtual option, they're having to reshuffle the classes based on the number of students who are remaining in the face-to-face setting. They will continue to use the same criteria they always have when they're forming classes. They try to provide a balance of gender, male and female, try to provide a balance of behaviors and academics so that your classes are heterogeneous and meet the needs of anyone in that room. If we choose the virtual option, can we still get resources from the school, like the Envision Math workbook or the ARC books? Any of the workbooks that are provided to our students are available to students whether they choose the virtual or face-to-face option. And your child's school will let you know how you can come and pick up those materials. For the ARC books, we will not be sending those home, but we do have a virtual ARC library, and so students will be able to access books on their reading level through their computers at home. Do we have to have a printer if we choose the virtual option? We are working very hard to limit the amount of work that needs to be printed out. There might be a time here or there that you will need to print something, and you could certainly work with your virtual teacher to see if she might provide those materials for you that you can pick up at the school. We also try to provide opportunities where you might be able to take a picture, to handwrite something, and take a picture, and send it back to your teacher rather than printing it out. Is there support for parents? Are there videos or trainings for us? We are working to make a folder for you on your child's page that will have a series of videos and how-to manuals for you to help you as you're accessing some of the different platforms. Just like the video you just saw, where Kim was taking you through and showing you the different aspects of our It's Learning platform, we would have similar videos to help you with some of the different applications and platforms that we use. Will schools have tissues, hand sanitizer, and disinfectant available? Absolutely. As Dr. Bearden has mentioned before, our facilities department was very proactive and was able to purchase many of our cleaning supplies that will last us for a good 18 months. Of course, your classroom teachers always appreciate donations, and if you'd like to send in a few extra boxes of tissues or some hand sanitizer, you are always welcome to do so. If we choose the virtual option, will we still have parent-teacher conferences? Absolutely. Your virtual teacher will be setting those up with you. What happens if my child misses a synchronous lesson? Your teachers will be recording the live lessons so students can either watch them again if they'd like to see it over and over, or if they happen to miss a lesson. For instance, your child may have a doctor's appointment and may not be available during the live lesson that's being promoted. How will specials work at my child's school for the face-to-face instruction? We all know that specials classes are vital for a child's well-being, and students will continue to have specials on a daily basis at all elementary schools. We will limit students' movement around the building and classes, and we'll try not to intermix classes to the extent possible. In some cases, your specials teachers may go to the homeroom class to provide instruction. We are also utilizing a block schedule for specials, which means that students may attend the same special for a consecutive number of days. So for example, your child's class may go to art for five straight days, and so that reduces the amount of contact that that art teacher has with other students, as well as your children having with other adults in the building. There will be a break between specials classes to allow students to wash and sanitize their hands before returning to class, and the specials teachers to prepare the room for the next group. If I choose the virtual option, my school offers STEM as a special. Will that be offered virtually? Unfortunately, no. If you choose the virtual option, the specials classes that are offered are art, music, and PE. In the face-to-face setting, will my child still have recess? Absolutely. Movement is vital to a child's development. There will be a reduced number of students on the playground in the designated areas. Students will have the ability to wash and sanitize their hands before and after recess. Playground equipment will be utilized because we want to support the spirit of play for children's social and emotional growth. But we will try to reduce any activities where physical contact may occur. Will we have an open house? Yes, we will. Kindergarten students at all of our elementary schools will have an in-person open house. The kindergarten student and one parent will come into the building for a brief orientation. Your child's school will provide you more information on how that will be set up. We cannot allow siblings, or multiple parents, or grandparents to come in the building at that time. So it'll only be the kindergarten student and one adult. If your child's in first through fifth grades, your schools are offering different opportunities. Some are offering a virtual meet-and-greet, and others are offering an outdoor meet-and-greet. And again, your child's website, the school will have that information for you. How is lunch going to work? At the beginning of the school year, elementary teachers will walk students through the lunch line and back to their classrooms to eat. Students will eat in the cafeteria in a limited capacity when it's feasible. And as students are walking through the line, our school and nutrition department have made some significant changes. Instead of children typing their numbers on the keypad, they'll simply be able to give their name or their number to the cashier who will enter that information for them, so students will not have to touch the keypad.[1795.74] Also, in the serving line, most of our food will be prepackaged, and students will tell the servers what foods they want, and servers will place those items on the tray, so students aren't reaching in and touching different items within the selection. Can parents and grandparents come in the building to eat with their children? Unfortunately, no. At this time, we're limiting visitors in our building to only our most essential. We hope to be able to revisit that as the school year goes through and that we're able to offer that opportunity later on. How will you keep my child from being exposed to large groups during the day? All elementary schools have organizational procedures in place to limit large groups and reduce the number of interactions between students from other classrooms. They've taken into consideration the car rider line, recess, and dismissal. And again, your principals will have more information on exactly what that will look like in their buildings. We will not hold assemblies or pep rallies or whole-grade presentations during this time period. How will our classrooms be different? Each teacher is working to intentionally maximize the space within their classroom to promote distancing to the most extent possible. Students will have multiple opportunities for handwashing and sanitizing throughout the day. And students are encouraged to bring their own water bottles, hand sanitizer, technology, and school supplies from home. If they have a pencil box, that would be a great place for them to keep their own supplies separate from anyone else. Will classroom volunteers and mystery readers be allowed in the building? We love having parents partner with our school, but at this time, our elementary schools will not be inviting volunteers into the classroom. We hope to be able to welcome our visitors and volunteers in the future. We know how important you are, and we certainly want your help, but we also want to limit the exposure that our children and our teachers have to other people in the building. Can I walk my child to the classroom, especially on the first day of school? Unfortunately, no. At this time, for the safety of students, staff, and families, our elementary schools will not be allowing parents or guardians to walk students to their classrooms. But we will have staff members available to ensure that students get to their classrooms safely. That was a lot of questions. I've tried to go through as many as I could for you. And again, I know there are probably some out there that you still have. I know some are directed specifically at your school building and where your children will attend. And so, like I said, your principals, the elementary principals, have worked so diligently. They've worked amazingly well together to try to collaborate and decide how that's going to look in their buildings. They'll be sharing information through their social media platforms, whether that's Facebook or Twitter or Instagram, as well as sharing that information on the school websites. So I encourage you on Monday to stay tuned and participate in that. Again, parents, we know that this is an incredibly hard decision to make. There's nothing more important than your child's safety. And I do have one last plea for you, and it is a statement and a comment that was made multiple times on our website. We want to make sure that whoever does come to school in the face-to-face setting is as safe as possible. And I know there are times when our children aren't feeling well at home, and we want to send them to school anyway. We don't want them to miss out on activities, or they may want to come to school because something special is going on. But this is a time we all really need to support each other and band together. If your child is not feeling well, especially if your child has a fever, but even if they're just not feeling well, we encourage you to keep your child at home. We want anyone who comes in our building to feel safe. And we, for that reason, are not offering attendance incentives. There won't be any awards for attendance. We don't want you to feel pressure to send your child to school every single day. If your child isn't feeling well, please keep them home. And if your child's exhibiting symptoms or has a fever at school, we will send them home, and we expect you to be able to come pick them up in a timely manner. I know, again, this is a tough time, but I know that by us working together, we'll be able to try to keep our children as safe as possible. Again, thank you for your time today. Thank you for tuning in at Tuesday's Town Hall and going to our website and looking at all this information. The deadline for our elementary virtual choice is Tuesday, July 14. We have hoped to provide you as much information as possible to help you make the best decision for you and your families. And I wish you the best of luck in making that decision. Thank you again for tuning in, and we'll see you soon.